Good evening. I'd like to call this board business meeting to order. Please stand and rise, or please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historic lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel Ben Row, would you please call the roll?
Yes. President Keating?
Here.
Vice President Stroger?
Here.
Director Baumreuth?
Here.
Director McElroy?
Here.
We have corps.
Excellent. Item number seven, recognition of staff, students, and community.
We got to adopt.
Oh, sorry.
I got you. I moved to adopt the agenda.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Director McElroy. Now moving on to item number seven, recognition of staff, students, and community. 7.1, recognition of the Shining Star Community Partner Award to community partner Lauren Benson and the Tacoma Nature Center staff.
All right. Good evening, Board of Directors, beloved community. My name is Amanda Scott-Thomas. I'm the Director of the Community Partnership Office, and it is my pleasure to bring to you tonight's Shining Star Award recipient. As you all know, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, school, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that the schools, our schools cannot do it alone. And in a recognition and investment of an investment of time, talent, and resources for Tacoma Public School students, families, and staff, the Shining Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Tonight, we have Tacoma Nature Center. It's often called a hidden gem in Tacoma. It's a 71-acre nature preserve, including wetland and forests surrounding Snake Lake, featuring trails and a visitor's center right in the heart of Tacoma. But the real gems are the Tacoma Nature Center staff. They are committed to their mission to increase understanding and appreciation of the natural world in everything they do. Tacoma Public Schools approach the small staff with our vision of bringing each and every first grader into Tacoma Public Schools, approximately 2,000 six-year-olds, imagine that, to the site, visiting every Wednesday through the school year. Education program coordinator Laura Benson didn't hesitate with a yes and dove in to collaborate and plan a program that meets the learning needs of our Tacoma Public School students. Throughout the school year, Lauren has refined the program and responded to various needs of teachers and students and supported learning in the sun, the rain, and chilly weather. She's a problem solver and a passionate educator, committed to equity, inclusion, and the Tacoma Nature Center's mission. Feedback about the experience from students and teachers has been amazing. "This is the best day of my life," said one first grader, said like only a first grader can say. Teacher feedback includes comments like engaging, connected to their learning in class, helpful and personable when describing Lauren herself. In Tacoma Public Schools, our community can come, we believe that engaging students and real-world experiences allows them to see their science learning, to make sense of our community, and can empower them to make Tacoma a better place. We couldn't offer this opportunity to our first graders without the collaboration and support of Tacoma Nature Center, a Shining Star Community Partner. So I want at this time to bring up Laura Benson and her team. Can we give them a hand as they come? Our Shining Star Partner for the month of April 2024. And Lauren brought her crew with her, so they're going to have some words.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. This is so cool.
Isn't that cool?
Awesome.
I just want to say a quick thank you. This has been a highlight of my career. I'm joined here with Devin and CJ, part of the integral team from the Tacoma Nature Center. We have a lot of fun every Wednesday. We have a lot more quotes. We've got a lot of, you know, this is the best day of my life. But ultimately, something like this takes the work of, you know, a lot of people in this room too, so thank you, from the teachers, the parent chaperones, the bus drivers, and everybody in between, where just want to say thank you. We're really excited to be part of this, and we hope it keeps going. So thank you again. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I just want to add, having been a Tacoma kid and living a block up from what was then Snake Lake, it was a swamp, so literally. And so I'm just really excited. It's always been exciting to me, having been a kid that played in that, that area of town most of my young childhood, to see what it's become. And so I just want to thank you again for your partnership and dedication. Anybody else have anything you want to add?
No, I just, I, yeah, I guess I'd always say, you know, we come from the early childhood field, and I can't tell you what, how important it is for kids from a very, very young age to be walking around in a nature reserve in their, virtually their backyard, and to know that what nature is and be curious about it. And all the staff, my kids are now adults, but they went to summer camp at Snake Lake and all the different things that their minds got opened. And I just want to say, just like teaching, and the teachers in our, in our system and the paras and all the people who work with our students, it's about opening minds and providing opportunity, and that's what you do every day. So thank you.
For me, Lisa, President Keating, it made me feel young and old at the same time.
I know.
Because I remember my first grade field trip to Snake Lake. My teacher was Ms. Rochello at Manitow Park, and we gave her a very hard time because someone got stuck in the swamp, and we all decided that we were going to like drag them out. And Ms. Rochello was crying, but our parent volunteers are there and, but it was so memorable, like you never forget, like your first time at Snake Lake, or the first time someone falls in the swamp there, so you know.
There were snakes, I'll just let you know.
Were there really?
Actual snakes when I was growing up there. Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. All right, well, thank you again. All right, moving to item number eight, superintendent's report. 8.1, whole educator recognition. And I see Dr. Forrest Greek making his way up.
All right, thank you so much. Wanted to give you a little bit of background before I get started. So every year, our HR team sits down and we go, all right, how are we going to make sure that we honor all of our work groups? And had a chance to, you know, make sure that we get everybody in there. And April was the month for educational support specialists. And that strikes a bell with me every single time because April's a huge celebration month in HR. I saw half of our team has birthdays in April in HR. So I remember it really off the top of my head. So without further ado, today's whole educator recognition is for ESPs, ESPs, excuse me, educational support professionals. And throughout kind of Tacoma, little Tacoma history, they've also been referenced as paraeducators as well. And so without further ado, I'm going to have Scott Rich join me, who is one of our school directors and has many different interactions with paraeducators across our school district and is going to highlight a couple of individuals, including the whole team that are here gathered today.
I know that team, that's Travis. All right, good evening, directors. Thank you. My name is Scott Rich. I have this wonderful job. I get to support our elementary schools, one of two directors that gets to spend a lot of time out with our students and our staff in our elementary schools. And this week, I just made a, made a commitment to myself, I was going to talk to principals and ask them about the impact of the work that our ESPs have in their buildings. And here are some of the things I heard. It was unanimous that they said, you know, we couldn't do this work without them. Couple highlights from my journey across the district this week. Mr. Maltoz at Bose, his principal, Ms. White says, students, staff, and families love him very much. He speaks Spanish and is able to assist in pretty much any situation. Mr. Maltoz truly cares about the whole child. Talked to Mr. Ball over at Stanley, and I asked him about Alicia Nieto, and he said, oh, you mean the kindergarten whisperer? That's what we call her. He told me that her expertise is to solve problems before they even know that a problem's coming. Talked to Mrs. Principal Williamson over at Geiger, and she's one of the lucky principals. They have a lot of ESPs in their buildings that support the Montessori work going on in classrooms. And she describes the work that they do as a one-up, one-down model, where teachers working with a small group in the classroom, ESP is up, moving around, supporting students with work tasks and social emotional supports. ESPs are like the wheels on a car at Geiger, she says. Couldn't go anywhere without them. And then finally, I got to talk to Janet, Principal Gates-Cortez over at Sherman, and I also got to hang out with Ginger Byrne over there. And if any of you know Ginger, she's, she's pretty remarkable. I hung out with her at dismissal earlier this week, and she literally knew every single family and every single kid, and believe it or not, she knew like how every kid's day had been and was able to communicate that with families. So the work is extensive and broad, and we couldn't do it without them. So just want to recognize those folks' work and then the work of the ESPs who are here tonight. Just a special shout out to Muriel Dionne and Anita Wise. I know they're in the crowd here. And then Ms. Jackie, I got to work with Jackie as a principal in several buildings, and I see her here tonight as well. So just want to recognize her amazing work.
All right, if we could just do one more round of applause for all of our ESPs in the room. Thank you so much.
I'd like to take a point of privilege because there's two special paras in the, in the audience that actually had, have very special places in my heart as a mom and with my family. And so Mrs. Kennick, who actually, the first day of kindergarten was not a problem, but it was the second day that was really a problem. And where the parents might have lost it on the first day, the kid lost it on the second day. And I will never, even though my kid is 19, I will never ever forget that morning when Mrs. Kennick just walked up to my crying kid and held her hand and walked her right into the building, and it was just a seamless, beautiful transition. And it was just a really beautiful, and then Ms. Wally threw so much of my daughter's experience, both of them at Geiger. I just know as a, as a mom, how important our paras are to our kids and to our families. So I just want to say thank you and acknowledge some special people to me. Does anybody else have anything you want to add? All right. All right, moving on to item 8.2, the 2024-2025 schedule changes feedback. And I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Garcia.
Hey, thank you very much. So tonight, I just want to give you a quick overview of what we talked about last night. We've started to get some feedback, and I just want to remind families, staff, students, they can give us feedback for the potential schedule changes at info, that is I-N-F-O, at Tacoma.k12.wa.us. And some of the things that we've already heard about is making sure that we work with our community partners to talk about before and after-school care through the Beyond the Bell and Club B, and then just an awareness with anybody else that is connected to the school. So we're in the communication plan of that, and what are those impacts and how would that affect them? Finalizing plans to things like adjusting athletics if the change happens. So what would that look like? So start times for potential competitions, people asked us to consider those things. And then when would we know, really, in that space? The feedback is, people feel like if they, if they knew, they could adjust in some elements of the feedback. And in that space, we want to let folks know, we will bring another update on May 9th to gather more time to provide feedback. It's very important that we start to identify the specific schools in the proposed elementary tier model, which ones would fall in that, and we hope to do that by May 9th, at the latest by the end of May. And then individual bus routes will be a little more complex, and that won't happen until later in the springtime, so.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Madam President, is Willie, are you still here? Willie Ross? Lincoln? Nope. Okay. I apologize.
That's okay.
I think we had a student that was going to be here and be recognized, and I just, if he was still here, I would want to make sure that. Pardon me? Okay. We'll catch him at the next time in.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Okay. So item number nine, staff report to the board, 9.1, TPS 2024 legislative priorities recap. And I think this is where our illustrious Mr. Charlie Brown, and I think me, will tag team a little of this, but welcome, Charlie.
Thank you. Madam President and members of the board, I am Charlie Brown, liaison for the district down to our state legislature. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and congratulations to all of you paraeducators for your recognition. Interestingly, the legislature actually recognized paraeducators this year as well, and it's my expectation that they will continue to recognize the important work that you do through additional state funding. So congratulations again to all of you. At least that's our intent, is to keep pushing for that for. Madam President and members of the board, I thought what we would do tonight is just go over the agenda that we had laid out earlier this year. You all adopted what we did, and then talk about the successes that we had and where we stand in continuing to try and push some issues. So we can go to the next, let's see if this will do this correctly. Wrong way. Oh, there we go. So critical district issues, as you recall, we have critical district issues, and then we have issues of high concern, just kind of breaking them out in two different ways. And the Maritime Skill Center is, of course, one of the top issues for the school district. The critical issues are really the ones that the school district itself are pushing. You might recall that in the 2325 capital budget, we received the $8 million to go ahead and get started from the state for the Maritime Skill Center. Everybody's very excited about it. I pushed this year to confirm that we would have an additional $4 million. Our original request was 12 million, and I have it very, in very good authority that we will have another $4 million. That would be forthcoming in the 2527 school year. So we should have the full 12 million that we have requested for that project. And I know that there are efforts underway, underway, of course, for the design and review and all that other work that is going on, and the land down at the Port of Tacoma. So I just wanted to update you on that, that we should be in pretty good shape. Part of my mission this year was to make sure they didn't forget that they had a promise that they owed to us. So the second issue that we worked on for Critical was a prototypical school model funding update, and it's a long way of saying the model under which the legislature funds school districts statewide. And we believe that the legislature has fallen behind quite a bit in funding school districts for the day-to-day costs of running a school district and for delivering basic education. And so we were pushing for increases for funding for school staff, including the paraeducators. And I want to note that Senate Bill 5882 passed, providing another $72 million from the state to school districts across the state for additional, for paraeducator staff to increase costs, basically for school districts to maintain and increase the staffing. And then we also pushed this year because we know that the costs of insurance is going up and utilities is going up, so we pushed on what's called the material supplies and operational costs of funding, or MSOC funding, and we're able to get an increase in that by about 43 million. So hopefully, some of those costs that are eating away at your underlying budget are going to get covered a little bit by the state. And just as a note there, I've had conversations with legislators since the legislature has concluded, and our intention and their intention is to continue to look for ways to increase funding so that districts are able to cover all those costs without having to dig into their local levies for that. So that's another area we'll be working on. Learning services support for the whole child, this is an ongoing issue that we are trying to get work on for before and after-school funding, getting grant funding. I want to note that this was a supplemental budget year, so going in and getting additional funding other than some of these larger areas was more of a challenge. We were not able to secure some grant funding as we were pushing for, but I think that those conversations were started, and we may be able to get that type of support in the future.
Charlie?
Yes.
For those that are listening either here at home, could you just describe what a supplemental budget means compared to, for this, just so that everybody can follow along?
Sure. So when the legislature, the legislature operates on a biennial basis, and that's every, they budget for two years, and they set out funding for that two-year period, and that is done during a odd year. So the 2325, they worked on the 2325 budget in 2023, and then in 2024, the even-year legislative sessions, they're shorter, they're only 60 days rather than 105. And what they do is they make adjustments to that two-year budget generally. In this case, we were able to generate some interest in funding some of the big areas in education, which I just went over on the paraeducators and MSOC. But some of the other stuff, they like to reserve for the full-on budget when they, when they're really trying to craft what will be the two-year budget priorities, I guess is what you'd call it, for that two-year period. So they didn't want to jump into some of the smaller stuff. Does that help?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
So supplemental adjustments, which I was pretty pleased with the adjustments that the legislature provided this year. And I, and it's critical to understand that this didn't just go to Tacoma School District, this is to education throughout Tacoma School District, gets a portion based on the size and population of the student body. The next issue that we really championed was sustainable energy assistance for buildings and school buses. I'm really pleased to note that the legislature did adopt a electric school bus grant program that, and provided about $20 million of funding through the Department of Ecology, interestingly, rather than through the OSPI. But that money should be made available to the school districts so that should the district choose to electrify school buses or buy electric school buses, this money offsets the cost, the additional cost of an electric school bus and some of the infrastructure upgrades that go along with that. And we worked really hard on making sure that the legislature understood that the infrastructure upgrades are just as important as the offset and the cost of the bus, because those can be fairly significant. So very, very pleased to see that. That doesn't mean that every bus is going to get electrified, but where it makes sense and where the routes work, an electric school bus is an option for the school districts now. And then the capital budget didn't provide direct funding for what's called the clean buildings laws. School districts are required to undertake audits of the school buildings for energy efficiency and then start getting them up to what is basically the average energy efficiency of like-sized buildings across the, across the state. There are significant discussions going on at the Department of Commerce of how they're going to be able to fund school districts because they understand that the capital costs for doing all of this work is not necessarily built into the capital levies that school districts do. And it's my belief that the legislature is very interested in using some of its funding to be able to help school districts offset those costs. So that'll be an ongoing issue for the school district. The student transportation funding formula reviews back, now we're on the issues of high concern. The student transportation funding simply is, is a, is a, what we describe as a black box essentially, and some numbers go in and a number pops out, and you don't know if you actually are going to get full funding from the state for what it actually costs to transport students, which is a basic education requirement. The legislature is beginning to understand that. I had some very direct testimony at the Senate Ways and Means Committee this year, where I was very clear that the McKinney-Vento, that the shortfall in McKinney-Vento student transportation funding is really harming districts. And I know that the legislators expect us to transport those homeless students so they have a place to go that is a consistent daily experience for them, and we expect them to compensate us for that. I think that we'll see more funding for McKinney-Vento as we go into this upcoming session. Unfortunately, we didn't get the, we had, we had funding available, but it didn't make it through the final, through the final budget negotiation. By the way, the transferred student transportation and special education and material supplies and occupational costs will be part of probably a broader agenda of all the education community, I think that you've all seen. And so there's efforts by the education community to push on those issues for the next legislative session when we have that big 2527 operations budget. Regionalization funding reform, this is an issue that affects the Tacoma School District as well as all the districts around us. Regionalization funding is basically an offset that recognizes the cost of housing in your particular area, but it varies from school district to school district and can have some negative consequences for adjacent school districts. And it's something that the legislature needs to fix. It was put in the 2017 agreement on education, funding the MacLeary Agreement. It continues to dog the legislature. My sense is that the legislature, while they didn't do anything on it this year, I had a conversation with one of the budget writers about a week ago, and they indicated that regionalization as well as levy equalization is going to be on the table for them to discuss. They know that the system is not working like they had intended back in 2017. School employee benefits board.
Charlie? Excuse me, Charlie? Yes? You fast forward just a few slides so that those at home can watch.
I guess I kind of jumped. So that was the regionalization.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize.
No, it's all good. Thank you.
The, so board member compensation was an issue that we've been pushing. We know that a lot of you put a lot of time in, you're operating and overseeing very large operations of employees and students that you're responsible for. It's an issue that some other legislators have been pushing. 6223, a Senate bill was introduced, we testified for it. But again, being a supplemental budget year, it didn't appear that the legislature was interested. I had several conversations during the course of the legislative session. We'll see if we can get more traction on that issue as we move forward.
And Charlie, can I just, for those that may not be aware, so board directors around the state are allocated a $4,800 stipend annually. the state are allocated a $4,800 stipend annually, and I know for myself, like that stipend, I don't even make it through a whole school year before that stipend is done. So majority of the time that I invest, and I know I'm not alone up here, is done voluntarily, and we get, there's, I think, a lot of misunderstanding and misinformation about what Board Directors do and do not, and how, get compensated for and what we get compensated for. And so ultimately, where the, like Board Directors make, school board directors make up the largest elected body in the entire state of Washington. And so if, it is a matter of, it, for many of us, it costs us money personally to serve in these roles, whether it comes to transportation, childcare, we don't, there's a lot of things that, I know it's an equity issue for WASDA in a priority, and we've had a lot of conversations around access to these roles, and if it's seen and treated as a voluntary, a volunteer position, then it's very difficult to do the really critical work that our staff actually, I think, holds us accountable to and expects from us. So, and this conversation I know had been going on for several years prior to Director Baumbruh and I joining the board in 2019, so this has been an ongoing conversation for a long time. So I just wanted to give a little additional context.
That makes, yes. The next issue is School Employee Benefit Board Funding. As we did with the regionalizations, there was an effort to create a separate Employee Benefit Board in the 2017 Legislature when we were doing the McClary. The School Employee Benefits Board, we've been given funding from the legislature at a certain amount prior to that, that really was much more approximated the actual cost of these benefits. However, the legislature has not fully funded the School Employee Benefits Board over the course of time, resulting in school districts having to use local levy funding for it. So we continued to push, and we saw that the legislature increased the employee benefits rate by about $25 million in this year's operating budget, recognizing the cost increases for school districts. We continue to work on that issue as well because it's one that just continues to rise as the cost of all benefits do. So we'll continue working on that. Community Partner Support is an area that we always work with our community partners, much like the Nature Center here, and so we're working with the City of Tacoma and all the members of JMAC, and they, we were certainly supportive of what Metro Parks was doing and the City of Tacoma was doing, and continued to coordinate with them, and my expectation is that we will continue coordinating with both of them, and I know Metro Parks in particular with the after-school work that we do. So we work to support them and with legislators because as a community, we all do better when we all work together, right? So the next issue is the simple majority for school construction bonds. This is an issue that has been going on for, I'm going to call it it several decades, to be honest. It dogs the legislature because should a simple majority for construction bonds go into effect, then the matching funding from the legislature would increase tremendously as well. I don't necessarily defend the legislative position of requiring 60% still, but the reality is that the cost to the legislature would be quite a bit more in that capital budget. So I think they're still looking for a way to be able to fund the ongoing and extra costs of getting to a simple majority for school bonds, but the bottom line is that we have to be able to, be able to build buildings, and Tacoma, the community is just terrific in supporting our bonds, and, and we are very fortunate and blessed in this city. There are communities out there where getting a 60% bond is getting harder and harder to do, and we're seeing fewer and fewer school districts being able to reach that threshold, so we continue to work on it on behalf of all students because not every student we know is going to stay in the Tacoma School District for their whole life. They may end up moving to another part of the state, and they deserve just as nice a building as you can get here in Tacoma.
And I would just add to that, that this is an issue for districts all over the state. Small school districts, rural school districts, it is a huge burden on them. And as context, Spokane School District, for the first time in 50 years, this year was not able to pass a bond. And so this is, this is work that happens through WASDA as well, just again, to benefit all students in Washington State. So it is, it is, it is a large burden on school districts and local tax dollars as well.
Right.
So, thank you.
Right. And the final issue, and ending on a positive note again, the school construction funding formula modifications, if you are able to pass a bond and you qualify for the School Construction Assistance Program, then you are eligible to get some money from the state, and it, it's matching money, it's not full matching money, it depends on the size, a number of different factors, again, a formula that goes into play. But the bottom line is that the legislature was able to put forward an increase in the square foot construction costs, the construction cost allowance for per square foot for a building, and increase that number from $271 to $350 per square foot in many places around the state, if not all. It costs more than $350 per square foot, but this was the amount that the legislature was able to do, and they, it's a $79 million increase, and that will be an ongoing number because once they set that number up, they really can't go back, not without some really strong justification. So we were pleased about that. I think overall, members of the board and Madam President, we continue to make progress down in Olympia. I want to thank all of our legislators here in the Tacoma area, the 27th District, 28th District, 29th District, and all the members frankly from all over Pierce County. We really have a lot of legislators who truly believe in education, who want to fund education, put our students in, and have them at top of mind at all times, and we've been very fortunate to have a very good working relationship with all of them, so we've been successful over the years. So thanks to you and to everyone who continues to thank our legislators.
Thank you, Charlie. I do want to just add one piece of legislation that is being monitored, a parental bill of rights that the legislature passed. There, it will go into effect on June 5th, and so we will, we are currently actively monitoring the implementation of that and any changes that will come from it, and I am working very closely with the Superintendent and General Counsel Ben Row as well as our colleagues at OSPI and through WASDA. So when we have updates and some clear understanding of the impacts and potential changes, we will definitely be reporting back. Are there any questions from the board for Charlie or?
Just thank you, Charlie, for you and your team and everything you do on our behalf and on behalf of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, Charlie. All right. Moving on to item number 10, Members of the Public Wishing to Address the Board. General Counsel Ben Row, do we have public comments tonight?
Yes, President Keating, we have 11 public comments for tonight.
Public comment guidelines, school board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The Superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@takoma.k12.wa.us. Please contact the Board Office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. Under Board Policy 1430, public comment, the Board President may terminate an individual's comment when the allotted time has passed and may interrupt a speaker to require the same standard of stability that the Board imposes on itself. Examples of uncivil comment include comments that are libus or slanderous under a legal standard, are unwarranted, are an unwarranted invasion of privacy, are obscene or indecent pursuant to the Federal Communications Act, or any rule or regulation of the Federal Communications Commission, violate school district policy or procedure related to harassment, intimidation, bullying, or discrimination, incite an unlawful act on school premises, or violate a lawful school regulation, or create a material and substantial disruption of the orderly operation of the board meeting. The Board as a whole has a final decision in determining the appropriateness of all such rulings and can maintain order by removing those who are disruptive. However, the Board recognizes the distinction between uncivil discourse, which it will not tolerate, and comments about the Board, district, and our staff that are negative yet still civil in nature. The Board will exercise its authority to maintain an order in a content-neutral manner. And I will pass it over to General Counsel.
Yes, our first speaker tonight is Carrie Madden, followed by Susannah Hopkins.
Thank you, Board of Directors and community for hearing me tonight. My name is Carrie Madden. I am the President of TFE SP 461 and Chief Negotiator for our bargaining unit. I have proudly been a paraeducator in Tacoma for 17 years. Paraeducators are the ones working the most directly with our district's most vulnerable students. We are currently in bargaining. While we feel for the most part we are being heard by those we are negotiating most closely with, they are working with a very limited budget for our bargaining unit. You and the Superintendent can change that. I recognize the district is experiencing budget issues. I also know that we currently have a housing cost crisis. We have an inflation crisis. Frankly, we are always told that there are budget issues when we are in bargaining. Yet we see that money is always found to continue the highest salaries. We see that school administrators get monetary gains. We are some of the lowest paid in the district, and yet we are the ones whose positions and hours are cut first and who are the last seat to see the smallest financial gains. We give and give and give. We give our time, we give our safety, and yet many times we feel we are treated as an afterthought. Paraeducators are educated, trained, skilled professionals with increased training responsibilities that are closely aligning now with those of certificated teachers. We deserve increased compensation for increased responsibilities. We feel we are taking the district's situation seriously and are simply asking for the same consideration. We need meaningful across-the-board wage increases and additional increases for special education paraeducators, and we need you to authorize the budget for that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Susannah Hopkins, followed by Liz Wall.
Hi, this is Susannah Hopkins. I'm a special ed para at Stanley Elementary, and I've worked with special ed for many, many years, and have a certificate of teaching from Ireland and have my master's degree, but I've chosen to go back and do this because it's in my heart. I go in every day knowing I'm going to be, I work in the success classroom in Stanley Elementary with some of the most challenging kids because it's what I love. The autistic kids, the medically fragile kids, the, you know, the academically challenged kids, and it is tough. I go in every day knowing that they are going to hit me, they're going to bite me, they're going to pinch me, and they're probably going to throw chairs, and that's because they don't get the green crayon when, instead of the white crayon. Or whatever their trigger is that day. And we have to diaper them. These are third through fifth graders. And they, I love these kids to bits. Absolutely love them, but it is very hard going in there and having them jump on me in frustration and stomp on my feet and pull me and twist my back, and I have missed, I've been out of, I've been out of all my time for months because I have hurt my back and I have been injured, and nothing that is sort of definitive, that I could say it was done. It just, I hurt and therefore I ended up with migraines, or I ended up with a sore back, or I ended up, and I ended up not able to work, and therefore I have run out of time and I've been unpaid for, for so much sick time because I ran out, and I'm unpaid and unpaid and unpaid for doctor's appointments and for sick days for the last, since January. Every single time I get hurt by one of these kids, and it's not fair. We need to get compensated.
Thank you, Susannah.
Our next speaker is Liz Wall, followed by Ian Armstrong.
Hello. My name is Liz Wally, and I'm a paraeducator with Tacoma Public Schools. This is my 18th year with TPS. Over the years, I've worked as a general ed para, back in the day when budgets were different and there were general ed paras, a special ed one-on-one para for several years, a Montessori assistant for many years, and I'm currently the building para at Washington Elementary. Recently, I was asked what a typical day looks like for me. I had to say there's no such thing as a typical day in my job. Every day is a new adventure. I'm a crossing guard. I teach six intervention small groups each day in grades K through five in both ELA and math. I provide extra SEL support and help when needed. I work in the lunchroom, I help with the end-of-the-day dismissal. Often, I'm pulled away from my own duties to fill in for absent staff members, especially one-on-one paras where substitutes are hard to find, and on occasion certified staff. I believe that all of the ESPs in Tacoma Public Schools provide a valuable and indispensable role to our students, our schools, and our community. Tacoma Federation of Education Support Professionals is currently bargaining for a new three-year contract. I'm a proud member of our bargaining team. We appreciate the effort and the hard work that your bargaining team has devoted to this process. We were, we are hopeful that they will have the support of the Board and the Superintendent in this endeavor. I thank you for honoring ESPs tonight at this meeting, and I ask that you honor and respect us at the bargaining table also.
Our next speaker is Ian Armstrong, followed by Gwen Lewandowski.
Hello, my name is Ian Armstrong. I have two daughters in SOTA. So From the River to the Sea, this was chanted by SOTA students on Tuesday. Students planned, or so I thought they planned, a walkout on Tuesday. I knew about it more than a week in advance, and I asked the school via email and was told that they knew about it, and the students would be counted absent. No other punishment, though. From the River to the Sea, that is an actual statement calling for genocide. The worst part, a lot of these students truly believe this is about freeing an oppressed people from the Israelis. This leads to another issue. This walkout wasn't led by the students. It was led by UW faculty and students. It was led by UW faculty and students. Well, while I was there, because I did attend, I was assaulted, threatened, shamed for being white, all by the UW staff and students. This is the people that our students have turned to. Anti-Semitic rhetoric, violence, bullying. The only positive is that the SOTA staff did not play a role in the protest. They appeared to only be there to protect the students. My question is then, why was there no further consequences for the students that participated? There was lots of anti-Semitic chants. If I were a Jewish student and I saw this, I would be in fear of going to school. I proposed that the school district adopt policies that suspend students for anti-Semitic statements. No exceptions. Adopt a policy of zero tolerance. If a student participates in gatherings during school hours within the purview of the school and chant things like anti-Semitic statements, they need to be suspended. If the staff felt obligated to attend for the safety of the children, it is within the purview of the school. On Saturday in Seattle is on your own time. On a Tuesday, within the footprint of SOTA, is on school time. Finally, I demand that sometime this year, the school district needs to hold impromptu and mandatory curriculum to give students an education on the Israeli conflict. I demand that that be done in a completely impartial way that merely gives the accurate history of the Israeli conflict from World War II until today. All conflicts covered and all atrocities covered. It is clear that a large number of students have never seen the actual history of the conflict, and if it can be accomplished, I believe there should be some input from Jewish people from Israel and Muslims from the West Bank through Gaza that are living in Washington. I know there's lots of them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gwen Lewandowski, followed by Carol Jackson.
Hi, my name is Gwen, and I'm an ESP in the RISE program at Hilltop Heritage. I started my job in January 2023, and I love my job, but I'm here to ask you all how I can afford to do my job. A lot of us starting ESPs, we bring home... I bring home a little over $1,000 a paycheck. That's $2,000 a month in a city where rents have gone up over 50% in the last five years. My rent's $1,600. I've got a son in stadium. I'm a single mom, much like all of us paras here. We are struggling. I work two jobs, sometimes I work three. Life as a para means your side hustles got side hustles. That's how it is. How do we support our students and support our teachers when we're not being supported? That's my question for everyone. We are here, we are not invisible, and we want... We want... We need a living wage, and we deserve that. We're not... Our jobs aren't a walk in the park every day, and we love them and we're passionate about them. That's what we're bringing to the table, so please do consider that when you support us, and I do want you to know the real dollar wages we're making and how difficult it is to survive. So, thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Jackson, followed by Annie Lambert.
Hello, my name is Carol Jackson. I'm a bus driver for transportation. I want to talk about the tier route changes that has been proposed. I want to say that... I would say that right now really not a good time to be doing that. I mean, actually, probably never, but you have people out there, you know, losing their jobs right now, and these changes that could result in parents losing their jobs, all these changes. And these changes could change their whole schedule around, and that will put a strain on the parents, and that will not make parents happy. If you're not a bus driver, not out there really running routes, it's easy to say how easy it is or how it looks on a map, say, "Oh, you can pick up all these kids at one From around the city without, you know, actually driving the route. Because these proposed bell times are much... The proposal is much closer together, making it difficult to navigate the city safely while attempting to arrive at all schools on our routes on time. While presently, some of us, we do are able to drive multiple schools, but this proposal leaves us questioning how really efficient it really is to be to squeeze all the time together while for... Have the middle school and the high school together forcing the buses to drive from one or the other, or pick up from both middle school and high school. And truthfully, I would think that this is a liability because I would say, think about two years ago, when I would say, "What happened at Bryant?" Think about that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Lambert, followed by Penny Kramer.
Good evening. My name's Annie Lambert. Thank you for the opportunity to share about the impact that special education para educators have had for my son Jacob. He is now in eighth grade in the Access Program at Hunt Middle School and is supported by a team of dedicated paras since kindergarten in the special ed program, and several of them are here tonight. Jacob has had a one-on-one para since third grade, primarily for his safety due to his frequent seizures and limited mobility. With his one-on-one by his side, Jacob can now swiftly, at least for him, navigate the halls of middle school, which gives him access to additional general education classes such as music and PE, and have lunch in the cafeteria with his gen ed peers. Without his one-on-one, he simply would not be able to engage in these activities. While in the Access Classroom, his one-on-one works closely with him towards his IEP goals, collaborating with a teacher and therapist to adapt lessons and programs for his unique needs. I think his para probably knows him better than anyone else, maybe besides us as parents. Since Jacob has had a one-on-one, not only are we less concerned for his safety, we also have seen him flourish with the daily encouragement from his para. We couldn't, as many have said, we couldn't... He couldn't do class without her. So I'm here today not only to share our story, but to advocate for the increased support and recognition of special education para educators, in particular within our school district. These dedicated professionals play a vital role in the success and well-being of our students with diverse learning needs and physical and social-emotional needs, and it's imperative that we take steps to ensure their effectiveness and retention in our system. It's crucial to address the issue of wages, as has been brought up this evening, especially for the special education para educators. By providing a competitive and fair wage, we can not only attract but retain these talented individuals who are passionate about supporting students with disabilities, and this can also reduce the risk for staff turnover, which is especially hard on our special needs students. Specialized training is essential for equipping para educators with the knowledge and skills necessary to address the unique challenges of the special education programs. To support my son, seizure first aid is a necessity, yet all the paras in Jacob's class are also cross-trained to support other students as well, some with very complex situations. Comprehensive training programs should cover topics such as behavior management techniques, individualized instruction strategies, and assistive technology utilization. By ensuring that our paras receive the specialized training they need, we empower them to provide the highest quality of support to our students. So, thank you for your time. I urge the school board to really prioritize these needs of special ed paras and all the paras that are here tonight and address these wage disparities so that we can keep these paras in our classrooms with our special kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Penny Kramer, followed by Miko Steinberg.
I'm going to make it big enough so I can read it. Hold on. Good evening. I'm Penny Kramer. I'm the president of Tacoma Education Association. I had a very difficult time choosing a topic for tonight's comments because there's so much that needs to be shared with our school board directors. Do I talk about budget issues? Do we talk about how our staff needs support with handling the immense social, emotional, and behavior needs of our students? Do I talk about the overloaded classes at Tacoma Online? Do I share about how a member had to stop a meeting after school today because a mouse was staring him down in his classroom? Do I share about water safety? Do we talk about building security? What about how start and stop times of our schools are being changed without any input from staff, students, and community? Feel free to ask me any questions about any of these topics. I'm happy to share. But for tonight, I chose solidarity as the topic I really want to address. I stand here in support of our colleagues of the Tacoma Federation of Education Support Professionals. They partner with Tacoma EA members in many different roles in our schools. Our para educator colleagues work beside us on a daily basis, and as you've heard, so many of our students cannot access their education without the work of these amazing people. I have had the privilege of working with many paras at Bryant Montessori, both as a parent and staff member. Many of our paras work way beyond their job description and use their amazing skills to keep students and sometimes staff on track. They are in the classrooms and with students every day, and they are essential employees. Showing appreciation and recognition for our paras is wonderful, but it doesn't pay their rent. One job should be enough to make a living, but did you know many paras have multiple jobs and still qualify for assistance? While all of the Washington Education Association has lobbied in Olympia for a living wage for ESPs, there are many things that can be done on the local level as well. The most specific request is that TPS provide the same IPD plus 5% over three years that Tacoma Education Association members negotiated in our last bargain. When you think about how little they are paid to begin with, IPD plus 5% is an extremely small amount of money in the overall budget. Our para educators, our colleagues, deserve a living wage, and I'd like to ask that all of our para educators who are in the room, please stand so we can acknowledge you tonight.
Our next speaker is Miko Steinberg, followed by Heather McLean.
Hi, I'm Miko Steinberg. You guys have probably seen me here over the last few months. Again, I am going to speak about Bernie, but today I am reading from a statement from the Bernie PTA. I'm here to read a statement as a representative of Bernie Elementary's Parent Teacher Association. Please accept our members' apologies for not attending in person as most are currently participating in our school's Global Community Night organized by Mrs. Weider and Mrs. Gruin. The Bernie PTA does not support the recent decision to remove Brittany Proudman from her role as assistant principal at Bernie Elementary. Ms. Proudman has been an integral part of our school's leadership team, consistently demonstrating dedication and commitment to our students, well-being, and the enhancement of our educational programs. Ms. Proudman's involvement with the PTA has been exceptional. Her mentorship of staff and students has been invaluable in fostering a strong sense of community within our school and collaboration. While we cannot support the decision to remove Ms. Proudman, we are committed to creating an open and welcoming environment for the new assistant principal, Monique Scott. We aim to honor the inclusive community that Ms. Proudman helped create and have confidence that Ms. Scott, as a mentee of Ms. Proudman's, will step into this role positively and be a strong influence for our students. We still hold hope that the administration will listen to the many concerns and reconsider their decision. However, in the event that they do not, the Bernie PTA will carry on the legacy that Ms. Proudman built by being welcoming and working closely with Ms. Scott to foster a supportive and collaborative environment between parents, teachers, and administration. As advocates for our children's education and the unity of our school community, we urge the district administration to actually address our concerns about the reasons for Ms. Proudman's removal promptly and transparently. Contradictory statements and the lack of clarification on the circumstances surrounding Ms. Proudman's departure has created distrust between our school community and the central administration. Over the past few months, there's been weekly feedback provided to the school board from Bernie families and staff. We know the school district and board value equity. In order to achieve equity, you need to know the unique needs of the body you're serving. Brittany Proudman's strength were a perfect match for our school's unique needs as a school serving many low-income, multilingual, and DHH students. To have her removed shows us the district didn't take the time to learn about our community and listen to what our needs are. We'd like to invite you to meet with the Bernie PTA, and we remain committed to working together to ensure the success and harmony of our beloved school. On a personal note, as a former state employee at an RHC, I would also like to express my solidarity with all of the paras here today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather McLean, followed by Tina Taylor.
Hello, my name is Heather McLean, and today I am coming to you to speak about violence in the classrooms. I implore you that more needs to be done to protect our student's safety. This includes safety from their peers as well. There are students in classrooms right now that have continuous documented physical violence against their peers as well as staff members, and not enough is being done. This should not just be another data point in a system that is left unchecked. Documentation is not enough. Yes, it is true that every student has a right to a free and public education that is appropriate, but oftentimes the A is forgotten. Appropriate. And not every setting is the appropriate setting. Teachers and admins should not have to be jumping through hoops being told that their hands are tied and that this is acceptable. Instead of more support, our other 24 students are getting trauma that will follow them. They hear screaming and they cover their heads in fear that they will be hit or have a table thrown their way. They are seeing their peers and teachers in class be punched in the face. Sorry. They are being hit with chairs and more. I'm not talking about specialized classrooms. This is happening in general education classrooms today. This is what our students are facing every day. When is enough going to be enough? When do the other students' education matter? It is not just about the one student. They also have a right to a free and public education without fear for their safety. They shouldn't be learning that violence is acceptable as long as they get an "I'm sorry" from their aggressor. What are we setting our students up for in adulthood if we are teaching them now that violence is just a part of their everyday life and nothing is going to change? This is a call to you to do more, to protect all students because the other 24 in the classroom also matter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina Taylor, followed by Jeremy.
Hi, I'm Tina Taylor. I am a teacher at Bryant Montessori, and I am the proud coworker of a spectacular Montessori assistant, which is what we call our ESPs at Bryant. We work shoulder to shoulder every day. I have worked with many ESPs that I am so proud to call colleagues. Something interesting that you might not know is that a lot of ESPs turn into teachers if they're given the opportunity and they have the money to pay for the education. Raising our own ESPs to be teachers and sometimes principals and leaders in our schools is a great way to build capacity in our buildings. So when I turn around and I look at these amazing people, right? I know, these are the first people to offer a hand to a child who's in need. These are the first people to hand out a Band-Aid to a child who's injured, and they probably bought the Band-Aids themselves as our building budgets have dwindled further and further. These are the people whose hearts break for our child... for our children when they are struggling or experiencing loss themselves, and these are the people who cry the longest and the hardest when we lose a child. When I turn around and I look at these people, I challenge you to look them in the eye and tell them that they don't deserve kindness and courtesy at the bargaining table. I want you to tell them that you don't respect what they're asking for, and I'm sure they're asking for very reasonable things because I know these people and I love them, and I want you to look at them and tell them that they don't deserve... And I want you to look at them and tell them that they don't deserve what they're, they don't deserve a living wage. They should be able to go home after work and take care of themselves and their families. Right now, there are lots of people who aren't in this room because they're working their second and third jobs, and that's just a tragedy. This is a career, and it should be paid that way. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeremy, followed by our last speaker, Brooke Hertenstein.
Hi, my name is Jeremy. I'm a teacher at First Creek Middle School. Our staff and students, along with many others in Tacoma Public Schools, started noticing a huge drop in our building's cleanliness once we returned from school after winter break. We did some digging, and we found out that TPS was short-staffing custodial positions, to the point where often one person was being tasked with cleaning an entire building in one night. This is now the new norm at First Creek and many other schools. In fact, just this past Tuesday, we didn't have a custodian on deck to clean our school. They had to call someone in from another building. They paid them for three hours overtime to clean our building. Now, First Creek Middle School serves approximately 550 students. It can serve way more. It's a big building. The building can't possibly be cleaned in three hours by one person. That means our school isn't clean at all, and it's not only the filthy, it's not the only filthy school in the district. Over the last two weeks, 280 people have emailed our school board members, calling on them to demand TPS clean our schools. Since those emails started coming in to school board members, conditions have gotten worse. My classroom hasn't been vacuumed in weeks. Garbage and spills from a wrestling match were left in the gym bleachers overnight this week. Mount Tacoma has mice crawling all around it, and so much more. Thank you to all the parents and the school workers who are coming out tonight to fight for the schools our students deserve. We are going to have to make sure that we hold TPS and the board accountable because our students deserve better. They deserve clean water. They deserve assistant principals. They deserve clean schools, social workers, nutritious meals, and so much more. Shout out to all the ESPs. Pay them!
Our last speaker tonight is Brooke Hertenstein.
Hello again. I shouldn't have to repeat myself and introduce myself since I've been here the last four meetings, but for those in the audience, my name is Brooke Hertenstein, and I'm here to speak about Ms. Proudman. I want to start with stakeholders. Who are they? Parents, kids, teachers, right, community voice? Hmm. Well, if you still haven't taken into account community voice, you've left the Bernie community still in confusion with your inability to do so and be honest. So why do we even show up? Why do we come and sit here? Why do we speak? Why do we be vulnerable? To continue to show, show the support to the woman who deserves to stay in her position. Our voices are going clearly in your ear and one out the other because this community is trying to be seen, trying to be heard. This is our fourth time, friends. It shouldn't take that long if community voice is really a thing. Our loss is someone's gain, and we know it's wrong, period. We believe in Brittany, and clearly the community does too. So like the PTA, we really hope you reconsider, and the reason this crowd is not filled with more Bernie is because we have an event tonight, so that's where everybody's at right now. So those who can make it, good, and those who can't have a valid reason. So we probably won't see eye to eye in this situation since the support's showing up clearly doesn't matter or providing insight, since you guys can't come to our building every day, we understand. But we're the ones who are there every day, and we're trying to show you what happens and who's always there on the forefront. We deserve better than that because we too are human. To have us being forced to get over it is the terminology that's been used in our building. That's not how every human works. Everybody has their own grieving process or mental things they have to go through, but being told to get over it and move on, that's not how you approach your teachers, your ESPs, and your office staff. Absolutely not. Why fix something that's not broken? So to finalize my speech, to those, to those or whoever makes the final decision, I'm going to ask two things of you. One, how about you come to our school, and you can tell the students that Ms. Proudman won't be in her position because you've already done enough to her? No need for her to do that when we both know she doesn't want to leave her spot. And number two, come just open the front door of our building and feel the air, feel that tension that this has created within our building. Thank you.
That was the last one we have for tonight.
Okay. Moving on to item 11, the Consent Agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Moving on to item 12, Policy Matters. Item 12.1, Second Reading of Revised Policy 2410: High School Graduation Requirements and Participation in Formal Graduation Ceremonies.
The General Counsel, on behalf of the Secondary Education Director of Schools, recommends the Board of Directors adopt the revised proposal of Policy 2410. Just briefly happy to summarize this on behalf of Dr. Hostetter. Actually, this policy and the next one that follow it are both in response to a change in the law that opened up a new graduation pathway for any school district in Washington State. They wanted to pass a policy and spell out how it would implement this rule. So 2410 and 2416 are both related to opening up performance-based pathways. Happy to take any questions you might have about the red lines.
I move item 12.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments for General Counsel? No? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item 12.2, Second Reading of New Policy 2014, or 26, 2416: Performance-Based Pathways for High School Graduation.
General Counsel, on behalf of the Secondary Education Director of Schools, recommends the Board of Directors adopt the proposal of new 2416. The difference between this one and the previous one is the 2410 is changing an existing policy that we have to permit this additional pathway to graduation, and the 2416, which is the one we're on now, spells out how that, spells out how we implement that rule to open up the performance-based pathway. So changing the previous policy and then adding a new one to describe the new pathway.
I move item 12.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I would, I would just add on both of these that, that the Equity Policy Review Team had a really healthy conversation and in-depth conversation on both of these items, as they always do, but in particular, I think, General Counsel, you would, I don't know if you'd agree with me, but I think that, that their comments were insightful and help and directive, and, and you will see them reflected.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item 13, Financial Reports. The financial report was presented as part of the April 18th, 2024 Study Session last Thursday. The presentation is linked below in the agenda. The next financial report will be presented at the May 23rd, 2024 Business Meeting. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org backslash departments backslash business and finance. Item number 14, Curriculum Instruction, 14.1, Approval of the Interlocal Cooperative Agreement for Educational Services between Bates Technical College and Tacoma Public Schools for 2024 through 2029 School Years.
That's a long walk up.
Welcome, Ms. Pace.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal agreement between Bates Technical College and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1, 2024 to August 31st, 2029.
I move item 14.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 14.2, Approval of Purchase of Startup Costs for 23 Additional Transition to Kindergarten Classrooms.
Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the startup cost of 23 transition to kindergarten classrooms in the amount of Funding source: Basic Education.
I move 14.2.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there, are there any comments?
I've got a comment. All right. So at our study session, we were talking about amendments to the budget and then kind of how TTK or Transition to Kindergarten would be impacting Tacoma and the community surrounding it. Ecap and Head Start are federally and state-funded programs that support at-risk or high, high-needs childrens and families. I served as Ecap teacher for a long time as an, as an advocate, and so I was really concerned about TTK taking away Ecap and Head Start children. However, on Tuesday, I met with the Early Learning Department, their team, and learned about how their process would be a little bit different, streamlining children into the programs that they qualify for. And there's a vast amount of children who are ages four and five who do not qualify for Ecap or Head Start, and their parents cannot afford to pay $1,600 to $2,500 a month, which is what private preschool costs in Tacoma. So Transition to Kindergarten will help fill that gap, and by having it in 23 additional classrooms will help meet those needs of siblings of younger, you know, they have an older sibling at the building, they don't qualify, and they can't afford to pay anywhere else, but we have this program that will help prepare them for kindergarten. So it's really important to me to get that understanding from the Early Learning Department of where these children will come from and how they'll be placed in our buildings. So I enthusiastically support this, but I did also want to educate folks because at the last meeting, I've made some comments about Ecap and Head Start, and so that's how it will impact our students and our buildings, and as you know, it's just really expensive to be in preschool these days.
And I appreciate that follow-up and our continued conversation around that issue. So thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item 14.3, Approval of Tacoma Head Start Five-Year Non-Competitive Continuation Grant. Application to the Office of Head Start.
Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve submission of the Head Start Five-Year Non-Competitive Continuation Grant proposal to the Office of Head Start. Funding source: Office of Head Start.
I move 14.3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, Zeke. Item 15, Business Matters, 15.1, Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Amendment Number Eight to the Contract Tacoma Public Schools Number 10 in Corusmo Construction for the Synthetic Field Fields Upgrades Bundle Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment Number Eight, which states the guaranteed maximum price GMP for the scope of work at Peck Park Baseball Field, Hilltop Heritage, and Lincoln Lightning. The Chief Operating Officer also recommends that the Board authorize a superintendent or designated to sign said GMP Amendment Number Eight in the amount of $10,903,362 for a total of GMP Amendments Number One through Eight of $37,596,855 excluding sales
I move item 15.1.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. I wanted to just say, in the document, I appreciated the listing of all of the previous dates dating back to 20, April 28th, 2022, up till current, all the times that the Board has approved this project. So I just appreciated the additional details in that. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item 15.2, Approval to Increase the Value of Contract TSD 23102 through Amendment Number One for Meadow Sweet.
Just some background information. We added juice and dairy products to this contract. It was more cost-effective for the district. We also felt it was a better product for our students, and Meadow Sweet is native to the Pacific Northwest. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize a superintendent or designated to sign Amendment Number One to TSD 23102 that increases a yearly expense for milk, juice, and other dairy products from $548,787 to $1,450,000 per year. The total value of the contract, including all associated amendments, is $7,250,000 excluding tax.
Is there a motion?
I move, I, I move item 15.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, Chris. Item number 16, Other Business, there is none, and that brings us to item 17, Board Comments and Reports.
Yeah, I'm ready. All right. So.
Ooh, she stretched.
No, I'm just, no, I'm actually, I just have a lot of tension in my body because it hurts. It does hurt. We're real people too, and we listen and we hear, but also there is this thing that the presidents always read before we start the public comment that says that we will not engage, we will not go back and forth with people from the public, and that is to help protect them and keep them safe and their comments being heard and validated by us not interrupting, but it's also to keep us safe by us not breaking the law or like in being inflammatory or insane with people. Because you go all over YouTube and you look at these school board meetings across the states, and you're like, oh my God, I'm going to get to Tacoma, and we're going to do that too, and it's just like, no, Tacoma, we're going to sit, we're going to listen, and we're going to reflect, and then we're going to take it back, and we're going to make decisions. I really want to say thank you to the superintendent, your office, and the cabinet for the work that you all do on our behalf. I really want to say thank you to my fellow board members. As you started out this presentation earlier about how we do not get paid, this is a volunteer position, and it's a very tough position to have, and it hurts, and, and it's true, and it sucks. And I used to be a para in this district, and when I worked in this district, I got paid $17.61 per hour, and I had to work three jobs, and I had eviction notice on my door all the time, and I was always running out of food, and I struggled. And then I came and I started on this board, being a para in University Place School District, and I still had eviction notice on my door, and I wasn't getting paid to sit at this dais, and I still had to listen to people, and I had to listen and be empathetic and struggle. And, and it hurts because there's these policies in place that say we will not engage in back and forth, and it's true. So there's a rule about bargaining. You cannot bargain from the dais. There's a team that does that work. I will not engage in that work. I will never break the law, and like I said at my last meeting, I will never speak on behalf of the board by myself. I just want to thank everybody who's doing their part. Thank you for coming. Someone asked, why do we show up? To be heard, to make it true, to make someone else feel and hear you, so that other people can be moved and spurred into action. So I hope that no one gives up on showing up because it's your constitutional right to do so. It's your best bet for advocating for your children, for your jobs, for your district. Come and be heard, and even when it sucks, and even when it hurts, I'm still going to listen. I had another comment about all the other things going on in the community, but today just hurt. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Maybe to the men, the men got to say something there. I'm not.
Yeah, I'm supposed to say something after that?
I'm fine, I'm sorry.
No comment this evening?
Thank you, Vice President. Director Leon.
Just a comment that Stadium had an excellent musical within the Heights production, so it was two weeks, and it was very well-attended, and the students and the staff did an excellent job all around. Thank you for that great performance.
Director Pumbright.
Yeah, I, you know, just have a couple things, and I'm actually going to probably let you talk about two of the things that I have instead of me, President Keating, but I'll just talk about JMAC because what the heck, right? Anyway, we had a JMAC meeting this month, and it was on the Pierce Transit Six-Year Transportation Plan, which was really timely because they talked a lot about their plans for electrification of buses and what that all meant, and of course, it had an opportunity, and our superintendent was at the meeting and shared a lot about some of the conversations we're having around buses and how we, as a district, are working hard to, you know, be environmentally, environmental stewards of our, for teaching that as well as practicing it. And so all of the JMAC members were, were talking about how we, as a community and our, as public entities, want to do our part and how can we all work together instead of doing it in silo, which is the whole point of JMAC, and so it had, was a really great conversation. So I want to thank the superintendent for being there and for always adding such stimulating points to that generate conversation among your and for always adding such stimulating points to that generate conversation among your peers. And also for everyone else that was doing that. And the other two things that I was going to talk about, but instead I'm going to pass them over to the President, are we had a board study session since our last meeting, and we had--
Feel free to add anything you want.
Oh, no, I'm going to let you tell this. And then also, we had a celebration for Catherine Ushka with the renaming of a park. And I'm going to let our dear President talk about those two items. I did. Well, so did you. I was hanging upside down. I was not in the picture, though. You could not see me hanging upside down.
President Keating, before you put a bone in this, I was trying to let Director McElroy's comments sink and sit and, you know, sizzle for a little bit. But I can't hold this back because I saw it on multiple platforms. So I feel like I should share it. So my apologies for saying I didn't have a comment because I do.
You do not need to apologize.
You'll understand why in a second. A few days ago, the Lincoln Drum Line participated in the Orting High School Battle of the Sound event. I didn't go, but like it seemed like every social media platform that I went on, there was somebody talking about how amazing the event was. So I did a little research, and I found that the Lincoln High School Drum Line, the ABES, placed first place in the battle rounds, second place overall. They were awarded for the best visuals and obviously the crowd favorite. So I just-- I have to sit here and give a shout out to Peter Briggs as well as the Drum Line over at Lincoln because it seems like every year, they continue to get better. Every year, the legacy of the impact of that Drum Line continues. And I do honestly believe it's so much about the leadership at the front of it. So shout out to Peter Briggs, shout out to Lincoln High School, shout out to the ABES, and congratulations on a successful event. Thank you.
Go ABES! All right. Well, I guess I'll start. So I believe I may need some clarification from staff on this, but I'm pretty sure that the FOS mathletes took state.
Correct.
Is that right? Like, I was like, wait, wait, wait. I'm pretty sure our kids--
The Falcons, six out of the past seven years, the math team has won the state-- a division of the state math competition.
Yeah. So huge congratulations to them. That was very exciting. And then, so I guess I'll also talk about the-- so we had a study session last Thursday, and there was a budget presentation. And then the beginning of the study session was about one of our board goals around environmental sustainability and specifically around transportation. And so that helped us conclude and meet each, all three of our goals that we set last October, last week. So for anyone that is interested in the study that was done by our staff around electric buses and infrastructure and what that would look like and where we are in positioning and our partners with First Student, the study session is on our YouTube channel, and there's really great information in there. And so this has been ongoing work in terms of working to get districts-- our district and other districts in the state-- to be able to have electric buses because the infrastructure is a major barrier and is not something, as Charlie presented in the legislative wrap-up, not something that there is funding for. So the funding is sought through grants. So that was a really, really great conversation and presentation. And then to talk about former, I'm going to say former board, School Board Director Catherine Ushka, who is our current City Council member. The Metro Parks honored her last-- was that last Wednesday?
It was a week ago.
So I think it was just a week ago. And Gas Station Park, as it has been known in the south end of Tacoma, was renamed in honor. It is Catherine Ushka Park. And it was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony. I was really honored to speak on behalf of the Board and the district for all of the dedication and work that Catherine has given in her service to the school district and our time here and also on the City Council and even prior to that, and in the community, and her advocacy for the east side of Tacoma. And so it was a really beautiful, beautiful ceremony. And so that was a really special day. We don't always get our flowers when we're here. So it was a really special thing to be able to do that for Catherine while she is here. And then the other, I have done several other things. Actually, yesterday, I think, or I think, I don't know what day of the week it is, but I was at Geiger, and they had the IDEA project. And so I was a volunteer with some classrooms. And the IDEA project there was an assembly that happened first. And then they-- this is all around sensory and disability awareness. And it was a really cool project brought that-- nonprofit-led in this work. And so I led the group around hearing. And it was a really, each station, students got to participate in what it might feel like. And they highlighted dyslexia, vision as being an issue, and how important glasses and contacts. And just to help kids understand, like, the differences, cognitive differences. There were since-- so with the dyslexia, I thought was really cool because it allowed students to think about how other brains may process information. And that it's not like, like, every brain is different in how they process that. So it was really, really fun to do that, to do that with classrooms. And then, I think that was Tuesday. And then yesterday, Superintendent and I were at an event that the Health Department put on Peaceful Tomorrow, which I didn't have a chance to tell all the board members. There are-- that's what the printouts are from the event yesterday. Their PeacePoint was a community-- is a community-driven plan around youth safety. And it was something that was done outside of the city of Tacoma, engaging students. And then the data that came from that, and then how other school districts in Pierce County, I would say, are working towards doing that. And so that was a really informative event that I appreciated going to. And then I will be at Mary Lyon next Tuesday for their learning celebration in the after-- or the later afternoon, which I'm pretty excited to be back at Mary Lyon. And then there's a Traffic and Safety Committee meeting that happens next Wednesday as well. And then I also want to give-- just want to name Hunt Lost, one of their beloved students, who was-- I will try not to be emotional-- who was a student I got to work with from when they were in kindergarten. And I will never forget the first day I saw her rolling out down the hallway. And so there's going to be a celebration of life at Hunt for her on Saturday that I am looking forward to being together and honoring this really brilliant, funny, and defiant young human being. So I just wanted to just acknowledge that I know several of our school communities are processing and dealing with the loss of Demara and so-- and staff who throughout the district knew her and got to work with her. So I just wanted to, yeah, just say something about her because she was very special to me as well. So, and with that, if there are no other comments or additions, I'll move to item 18, announcements of the next regular board meeting. May 9, there will be another business meeting at 6:00 PM. May 25, at 6:00 PM, will be-- this says business meeting and executive session-- May 23. Sorry, May 23. And then on June 6, we will also have a business meeting. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.